Chair Moore. Chair Moore, this is Lauren Bridges.
Can you hear me, Lauren?
Ah, there you are.
There I am.
Okay, it's time to start if you want to go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Absolutely. I called the meeting to order of the May 18th Planning Commission. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lena.
Here.
Commissioner O'Nines.
Here.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Mechanic.
Here.
Chair Moore.
Here. So, next item is approval of the minutes. The Katati Planning Commission Regular Meeting of February 18th, 2020. Is there any changes? Are there any? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
We approve the minutes.
One second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lena.
Abstained since I wasn't attending the meeting.
Commissioner O'Nines.
Abstained.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mechanic.
Yes.
Chair Moore.
Yes. All right. So, any changes to the agenda?
None.
Okay. Move on to oral and written communications. The public is asked to, well, this is kind of interesting. I guess I'll have to reword this. Public is asked to speak on agenda items. Let me just look at this. Sorry. I'm used to having people come to the podium. Oral and written communications. Public comment on non-action agenda items shall be received during the designated portion of the agenda. Comment shall be limited to not more than three minutes for all non-action items. Do we have any participants that would like to speak on this?
Chair Moore, if I can interject.
Sure.
I also want to mention that any attendees willing to, correction, wanting to make a public comment, but they use the raise hand icon on their smart device or desktop computer, or dial *9 if they're just using their telephone.
Okay.
Please listen carefully for the chair, or myself, the city clerk, to address my name or phone number, and for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin, and at this time I see no hands raised in the attendees list.
All right, great. Thank you, Lauren. And I will close the oral and written communications portion of this meeting. Move on to matters at hand. The first item is Jamie Lane Affordable Housing Residential Subdivision and Design Review. Can we get a staff report on this?
Thank you, Chair Moore, members of the commission. As identified, the project before the commission this evening is the Jamie Lane Residential Subdivision. We also have the applicant team available on this meeting this evening. Dev with the Housing Land Trust, and Steve LaFrankie with LaFrankie and Associates, the project engineer, is also available, and we'll have a pre-presentation after the staff presentation. There's significant history with the city on this project, and many of you probably are more familiar with it than I even am, but I'm going to get into it briefly as a part of the subdivision review. The item before the commission this evening is request for approval of vesting tentative map at preliminary and final design review to allow the construction of five single-family homes at the intersection of Ryan Lane and East Katati Avenue. This is an unaddressed 0.67 acre parcel, and the proposed lots are approximately 5,000 square feet each, and will be developed with new single-family homes which front onto Ryan Lane should the project be approved this evening. And all five of the homes are proposed as below-market-rate affordable housing projects and designated to moderate income levels, which are families who make up to 120% of the area median income. As I mentioned, there's significant history on this project, just to briefly summarize some of it. In 2004, a 10-unit townhome project was approved on the site, but the project was never constructed. In 2009, the redevelopment agency, which was an arm of the city during that time, purchased the site and shortly after entered into an agreement with the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County to develop the property. In 2012, a six-unit townhome project was approved on the site, which had been proposed by the Housing Land Trust, but that was never built. And then in 2019, the Housing Land Trust filed a new application to propose the current project. And then one item in the background that identified here is, as a part of the review of this most recent application, staff sent out a notice of application to the surrounding residents in March of this year to notify them of the project and its pending decision with the Planning Commission and City Council. And in response, staff received three written comments which are attached to the agenda and project packet for the Planning Commission to review. So, this site, as I identified, is on the corner of Ryan Lane and East Katati Avenue, identified here with the star. To the north and west of the site are similar residential homes, townhome developments, and then to the east is a storage facility, mini storage, and the project site is directly across from the Santero Way specific plan neighborhood and the smart station. The next slide is an aerial photograph giving a little bit more context of the storage, the adjacent storage property, and the residential townhome developments, and that is highlighted here. This is the 0.67 acre parcel proposed for review this evening. This slide identifies the site plan, includes five single-family homes, as identified in the report, about 1,300 to 1,500 square feet in size. All homes front onto Ryan Lane, and each has a detached alley-loaded garage, and an assigned guest parking space, basically one per unit, so there's five guest parking spaces, and two covered parking spaces per single-family home. All fences are proposed to be reconstructed along the property lines, or new fences will be constructed on the eastern and southern property lines, and then the property is also served by an emergency vehicle access that will be gated, but will provide an EVA from East Katati Avenue if necessary, and that is, design has been reviewed and approved by the Rancho Doby Fire Protection District. This is another site plan, version of the site plan, but it includes the landscaping, just provides a little bit more context for what the development will actually look like, should it be constructed. This slide shows the streetscape and elevations. All homes are proposed to be approximately 15 feet in height. There was a typo in the staff report which said 20, so I wanted to identify that. And they do include craftsman features, although they are modular construction as a method to improve the affordability of the development. They incorporate horizontal lap siding, divided light windows, column porch supports, and exposed joist detailing in keeping with some of the Katati development standards which identify craftsmen as the preferred design, residential design for single-family homes. Getting into a little bit of the analysis, as identified in the staff reports, staff find that the project is consistent with the general plan and housing element policies, and that it's an infill project, provides a design that's consistent with the neighborhood character, will further affordable housing efforts in the city, and is adjacent to available services that have adequate capacity. As identified, the site was previously zoned planned development. However, that zoning designation didn't provide any specific development criteria separate from the current neighborhood medium-density zoning district, and so the analysis of the project design is based on the neighborhood medium-density zoning criteria. The project is consistent with the requirements or exceeds the requirements for the parking, the height, the frontage design, and the lot size requirements, but as identified in the staff report, is requesting concessions as an affordable housing project with regards to the setbacks, the lot coverage, and the lot width. So, this is a vesting tentative map, and was, the analysis of the project identified that it did qualify for a Class 32 infill exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. As identified, the average lot size is about 5,800 square feet, but that does include access to the rear-loaded garages. Ryan Lane is a private street jointly maintained by those surrounding developments. This parcel will be included in that maintenance per the existing easement. It's proposed to be accessed by a private driveway from Ryan Lane, and staff has found that it is consistent with all criteria of the access and use easement covering the development of the site. Sewer and water facilities, as well our storm drains, are all located in Ryan Lane, or will be directed to the primary facilities in East Katati Avenue. As identified, it's five single-family homes requesting design review, two detached car garages. They do incorporate craftsman elements, approximately 15 feet in height, single-family homes, about 1,300 to 1,500 square feet in size. All homes are three-bedroom, two-bath, and they do propose to develop the project with a common yard frontage type. The typical standards for the neighborhood medium-density would require a 20-foot setback. However, they're proposing a minimum of an 11-foot front yard setback as one of the requested concessions, and that's primarily driven, the need for that reduction is primarily driven by the rear-loaded alley design, which from the staff standpoint is a more attractive design and minimizes the appearance of automobiles, minimizes the pedestrian bicyclists' automotive conflicts by having one access point for all five homes onto and from Ryan Lane. And it does, it minimizes the appearance of the garage, allowing the single-family homes to be the primary element viewed from the street frontage, the public vantage point. And as identified, the site is proposed to be fully landscaped, and those landscape plans will be compliant with the water-efficient landscape ordinance requirements. As identified, there were some issues raised by the neighboring developments, primarily regarding existing parking conflicts between those existing homes. Given that the project is fully compliant with the existing easement requirements and exceeds the parking criteria identified in the zoning standards, staff did not feel that this issue was a zoning or land use matter to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, but rather it was a civil matter between parties associated with the easement. And just a reminder, procedurally, because this is a subdivision, the City Council has the ultimate decision-making authority, and the Planning Commission's review will be a recommendation to the City Council whether to find the project exempt from CEQA, approve the vesting tentative map, and approve design review for the proposed homes. With that, it's recommended by the Community Development Department that the Planning Commission review the proposed project plans and materials, and hear all input as associated with the public hearing, adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from the requirements of CEQA as a Class 32 categorical exemption, and recommend to the City Council approval of the requested tentative map and design review for the Jamie Lane five-lot residential subdivision. I'm available for any questions, and as I mentioned, Dev from the Housing Land Trust has a presentation to give as well, and I will give up control of the PowerPoint back to the clerk.
All right. So, I think we're going to go ahead and listen to the presentation from, is it Dev?
Yes.
And then we can ask questions of staff.
Sounds good. Well, good evening, Chair Moore, planning commissioners. This is Dev Genshers with Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County. I'm the executive director, and I am very pleased to have the opportunity to present to you this evening on the Housing Land Trust model. And so, can I share my screen, or is someone going to forward this slide?
Yeah, Dev, this is Lauren Bridges, and I'll go ahead and try to give you a little control.
Thank you. So, do I have the option to share my screen?
So, your presentation is, you should be able to see it?
Yes.
Okay.
I can just forward it. Okay, thank you. Perfect. So, Housing Land Trust focuses on housing the workforce, and when we think about housing the workforce, we focus on what really matters, which is the paycheck. So, the price of the home is tied to income so that it remains affordable in perpetuity. We're doing two things with the Housing Land Trust model. We're setting the land aside at Jamie Lane as a community asset. So, forever that land will be held to serve one purpose only, and that is for the house that sits on that land to be affordable to the workforce. We serve pretty much every city in Sonoma County, and we actually already have homes in partnership with the City of Katati at Woodland Hills. Our partnership is with the city. We view ourselves as adjunct staff to the city. We help to lessen the burden of government by helping to create housing that's affordable, and we steward the process from the very beginning, as we are now, working with our developer partners and with city staff who have been incredible for all these years that we work together, and then bring in our model of stewardship to qualify the buyers and to really facilitate the process of creating the housing opportunity. So, how does this work? At the end of the day, we have access to the land in perpetuity, and we hold that land in trust for the community benefit. We lease that land to a family. The family enters into a 99-year renewable ground lease. So, you can't say forever in legal terms, but you can say 99 years renewable. And this method gives an opportunity for the homeowner to access land without having to pay that market rate price, and to be able to afford the house that sits on top of the land, but still have and enjoy exclusive rights to the property, but acts and feels like ownership. That homeowner agrees to sell to the same income level to keep the home affordable in perpetuity. So, it's a pay-forward model. You have an opportunity to stop renting, start owning, and to build equity, and then you sell when you're ready to, to the next person that's in the same income level that you were in when you bought. The developer sells the house directly to the family, and the family owns a home with a simple 30-year fixed mortgage. The process for all of his partners, in this particular case, is that the city owns the land right now at Jamie Lane for the purposes of creating affordable housing. The city partners with us to restrict the workforce unit. You determine the workforce criteria for the units. What AMI are we going to serve? What are the preferences going to be? Is it going to be for live work? And we really work together to recruit and retain our workforce so that we're not losing them because of the high price and cost of housing. We work on all of the regulatory agreements directly with your city attorney, and we submit an application, as we are today as a team, to you. We are working through the entitlement process together and through the project approval, and then we'll qualify the buyers. We'll do all the marketing, all the outreach to local employers, and work directly with the city department, and reach out to the police department, to major employers in the community. We will prepare all the regulatory documents between us and the city to ensure that the land will only be used for the one purpose, which is to have workforce housing on it. And in the meantime, the construction will occur, and the developer will build the workforce unit. At the close of escrow, we all meet to make sure that this transaction goes smoothly. Qualifying information that we compile and is compiled by our lender is not very different from purchasing a market rate home. We do, however, have a couple of things that we focus on, which is the qualifying ratios. We want to make sure that people aren't spending more than about 35%, about a third of their paycheck on all of their housing costs. And we want to make sure that, including all the housing costs and any existing debt, that that debt is not exceeding 43% compared to their total gross income. Now, as the city decision bodies have the opportunity to decide if you want to have a preference to give to qualified applicants, so all things being equal for applicants, you have the decision to make to say that, well, if all things are equal between applicants, we want you to give preference to people who live or work in the City of Katati. How do we keep the homes affordable for subsequent buyers? The price of the home is tied to the paycheck, not the market. We take that land off the speculative market altogether, and the index that we use is tied to the AMI, the area median income that comes out every year. In order to keep the homes affordable to future buyers, our homeowners agree to sell their home for a limited price when they decide to move. The maximum price is calculated based on what was paid, plus an annual increase based on the change in the area of median income. For example, these are real numbers, calculating the resale price. If the initial median income in 2002 for a family of four at 100% of AMI was $7,5100, which it was, and 10 years later in 2016, that same family of four is now having a median income of $82,400, and the change in incomes from 2006 to 2016 is 9.72%. As you know, AMI charts come out annually, so the change could be more, could be less, depending upon the numbers. So, under this scenario, if the initial purchase price was $300,000, and if the change in median income was 9.72%, then the maximum sales price is $329,161.12. The appreciation is $29,161.12, because that $29,000 is what the translation of 9.72% increase is in dollars. And what is the total equity? What does our homeowner walk away with? We do not take any share of the equity. There are no seconds, there are no thirds, there are no fourths, there's no fifths. There's nothing complicated. It's just a 30-year fix. Remember that they have for their mortgage. And there is no part of the appreciation that goes back to the Land Trust or anybody else, because our entire goal is to say, stop renting, start owning, build equity, and then use Agnastec to buy a home in the community. And in the meantime, we haven't lost our workforce. We haven't lost our teachers, and our city employees, and our medical personnel, and our first responders. But their total equity is based on the appreciation, in this case, $29,000, plus the debt reduction, which is whatever they've paid off on their mortgage, and any down payment, which is not required, but if they had some down payment, they would get that back too. Stewardship matters. We are in this process from the very beginning, working with city staff, to determine what is it that your city needs, and who do we need to serve, and making it happen, and bringing multiple partners, in this situation at Jamie Lane in particular, to make the project console. We then continue through the entitlement process, qualify the buyer, build our relationship, make sure they're going to succeed, and make sure that they've got their financial situation in place. And once they're in their home, we are in touch with them every single month, and we continue to provide financial counseling, homeownership support, and our resale, make sure that home is sold to the next qualified buyer. Our focus is on families, not on homes. We have homes in our inventory that have now served four families, and each time, the home has remained as affordable to subsequent buyers as it was to the initial buyer. And each time, the home has remained as affordable to subsequent buyers as it was to the initial buyer. Why does subsidy retention matter? We are here to protect the public investment. We're here to eliminate the need for government and private subsidies in the future years as units are resold. We're making a one-time investment. And that investment is going to be tied to the incomes and it will continue to stay affordable without additional subsidy. Because any subsidy that we have now is going to be tied to the unit, not the family. Again, no seconds or anything like that. We are writing down the price, we're front-loading the subsidy, and that is tied forever to the income. We're maintaining income-targeted workforce in our housing stock. And we are creating community wealth by setting that land aside forever for this purpose and personal wealth for that family while we maintain future affordability. The City of Cattati and the Land Trust are continuing the partnership that we began with Woodland Hills. So once again, we will be creating community wealth by preserving land that will benefit the community in perpetuity. We will be partnering with a nonprofit, you and our nonprofit, to steward a finite resource that is land that serves as a permanent subsidy to individual families, generation after generation. We're making homeownership a reality for the workforce in our community. So they're not leaving to find that homeownership opportunity somewhere else and taking their jobs and their skills with them. We're delivering stewardship to families to ensure successful homeownership. We are constantly in touch with our families. And together, we are strengthening the fabric of our community by providing our workforce a secure place to live. So what is new this time? This not, this time we're responding to the fires that we have had. And for that reason, we've had to find an innovative way to achieve our goals to create housing for our workforce that is perpetually affordable. We're introducing a prototype to the county and the state with a product called MH Advantage Homes. Who's interested in this prototype? The County of Sonoma is also a funder in this project. The State of California wants to see an innovative housing model and is participating. Manny May, the federal policy called Duty to Serve, is recommending MH Advantage. And the Director of the Department of Disaster, Resilience, and Recovery actually came out to see Jamie Lane, to go out Santa Rosa and to see this MH Advantage product come to life. And they are watching Jamie Lane because this prototype in Cattati is one that is going to be replicated in Butte County, in Houston, in New Orleans, and in other cities in Sonoma County. Why is there a disinterest? Because we need to find ways to get people housed in a way that somehow addresses the high cost of labor, the lack of resources, and the time it takes to get to an idea to actually housing someone. And the interest is there in this prototype because we can replicate it. And this is a successful model for disaster areas in particular. We're able to get housing on the ground sooner and preserve it through the Land Trust Model to serve our workforce for generations. Thank you for listening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for your presentation. So I'm going to go to our commissioners to see if there's any questions of staff or of, for the Land Trust. I'm going to start with Brittany.
Thank you. Yes, I have a few questions, I think mostly for staff that's there. Specific questions to the layout. First, I was, I just wanted to clarify, so accessing the garages in the back, that access would happen through a driveway on the side of the house? Or is there going to be some sort of street access around the backside? I couldn't tell from looking at the map.
Yeah, Lauren, can we bring the power plate back up? But the answer to your question, the access to all five garages is via one driveway off of Ryan Lane that wraps around the, basically the homes, the yards of the homes, and then gets into the garages, essentially driving west because the faces, the doors of the garages face east towards the train tracks. And Lauren, if you can go to the last page, or here we go, I can do it. Eventually. But you are correct in that the access is off of Ryan Lane via one single driveway to serve all five garages.
Can I interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
Take a look at the blueprint on TM 7. That makes it pretty clear.
Thank you. Also, I was wondering on page 46 of the packet, so over in the pack for the drawings, TM 21, what would be? I saw that there's a double-stained automatic gate and a little bit of blue screen there. And so I just also wanted to make sure I'm reading this correctly. Those would be around the entire lot? Oh, sorry, not the entire lot, but those would be around three sides of the lot, is that correct?
Yeah, so detail one on TM 21 is the actual fence detail. And then detail four is the gate, which is only going to be accessed by emergency personnel if they need to get back there. So say there was an accident that blocked the access from the driveway, they would then come around and on your screen, you'll see that green line that's being drawn across the, that's where that gate location is from East Cattati. So generally, that will always be a fenced, a closed gate, fencing off the site from East Cattati. But that is an automatic gate that can be opened by the fire department if needed.
And I know in some proposals here, and I'm trying to understand what extent we're approving the design, but I know sometimes we'll get more of a rendering that provides some more real estate control of what the home could look like. Is anything like that available? Or are these drawings essentially what you have?
Yeah, this project, we did not get anything other than the elevations, which are being presented on the screen right now and are in the packets. Renderings are fairly expensive design criteria, or I'm sorry, design element. And that is not a requirement of our design review process. The elevations with more detail are on, begin on page packet, I'm sorry, packet page 49. And that's got elevations of the garages. And then 50, for the next couple of pages, are the individual homes, showing all four sides.
Yes, I can see somewhat of the craftsmen who look in those. I was just curious if those, if I was missing anything to go on. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brittany. I'm going to go on to Sylvia.
Hi, yeah, this is Sylvia. So I know that parking was a question, and I had a question on clarification. When I looked at page 76 in the packet, which was the original agreement with the Miller, the Miller Townhomes. And that one, it talks in, on page 76, number 21, about the parking area. And then when you look, when I reference that to the architect Matt TM 11, there's a note on there, which I'm trying to figure out what it says. But there's a note on TM 11 where it says, "Existing private on-street parking permitted for project use per existing agreement under document number 2004-13036042." Does that mean that there was already an agreement about street parking?
That's exactly what that means. So there is an easement that covers, an easement is basically a document that governs the use of property. And I'm sorry, I'm going to go back in the presentation. It covers all properties that are identified here. So the yellow boxed parcel, which is a development site. Then the two adjacent developments served by Ryan Lane. So those are all accessed via Ryan Lane, which is a private street, but as a part of their development, including this other parcel, which is actually originally dedicated to land for those developments to be accessed across it. They are all entered into an agreement that is managed through this easement. And that agreement says that Ryan Lane, this portion of it, essentially functions as a public street with public parking.
Okay, that was my question because I wasn't sure whether, because there were some letters from the public, whether that was already a designated space. So I was looking into what that agreement was from 2004, that was in a TM 11 map. Thank you.
All right, Sylvia, do you have any other questions?
No, I think for now that's all.
Okay, great. Steve?
I have just one question for staff. And it could be that I just couldn't find it. But what is the setback for the furthest house from East Cattati? I'm sorry, the nearest house from East Cattati Avenue?
Give me one minute. I believe it is approximately nine feet from the back of sidewalk. But there is a landscape strip and then a fence, which reduces the kind of the functionality of that setback. Sorry, I'm trying to find the specific discussion of it in the staff report. But it is, so from East Cattati to the actual structure is about nine feet. However, from the fence to the new home will be just about three and a half to four feet. Ah, I'm sorry, yes, so on page 12 of the staff report, there's a table that identifies, and I'm sorry that the cutoff, the headings on the table are on page 11, but the side setbacks range from nine, about nine and a half to about just over three feet. But functionally, they're really about five feet to three feet between the structure and the fence line.
Noah, is that going to be a sound fence?
It is not a sound fence as it's currently designed or proposed.
Noah, this is Andrea Chapman, the landscape architect. Can you hear me?
Absolutely, yeah, thanks Andrea. Please send in.
Yeah, the fence that is along East Cattati Avenue is a double-sided fence, an eight-foot fence. And we did design that to help attenuate any kind of noise from East Cattati Avenue, any impacts that may occur from the ways from, you know, East Cattati Avenue. So that was something we took into consideration. And that is all.
Okay, thanks. Steve, do you have any other questions?
No. My only concern is the distance between house number five and East Cattati Avenue. And if that fence attenuates the noise, then that should take care of my issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So Neil, you're next.
Yes, hello. I've got a question about just the history going from 10 units, the original design, 10 units, to the current five units. It seems like it's a really high-dense area. And you've identified it's actually at the minimum density. But I wonder how that was arrived at?
So the past project, yeah, the past project was six townhomes, four of which had ADUs proposed over those garages. And I think I have a slide of the approved, yeah, this is the site plan of the most recent approval, but it's more similar to what was previously approved with those six townhomes and four ADUs over the garages. That project exceeded the allowable density of the zoning, of the general plan designation. But it was a planned unit development and had been granted the extra units because they were ADUs and it was a planned unit development. The applicant, in looking at the market types and the type of housing that they were trying to provide to the moderate income levels, chose to revise the design to the proposed single-family homes. And I'll let Deb chime in if she has anything to add about that choice.
This is actually Steve LeFrankie, the project engineer. I can weigh in a little bit more. We were the engineers on the original Ryan Lane project, as Noah was explaining. And then just over the years, and one of the things that I think needs to understand is on the product type. So this is a manufactured home, and it's manufactured advantage, which means that it's the comps out as with stick-built homes. And one of the things we're trying to happen through this is the affordability. So at some level, that also dictates the width of these units. And then also with the setbacks, how many lots, you know, we're able to get in there. So it became an affordability issue to have these kinds of units on there and unable to get that kind of density that was first, you know, proposed for the Ryan Lane. So it's evolved over the years to get to this because, again, this is kind of, as Deb was trying to explain, is a, a kind of a prototypical site. And everybody is looking at this to see if this is a go and if it works out for the affordability. So that's really what it got down to and the history and how it got to the number of units that we are proposing now.
So that's basically saying that it was the footprint of the manufactured advantage houses and what was available in those, in what their catalog is?
Right, it's, there was a couple of things, but basically they're all the same width. And it varied from, a little bit from product to product, but not much. These are, and so we were kind of limited to that width of the house. And then we looked at, you know, and as we were just discussing, the setbacks aren't very, you know, very robust. It's pretty tight. So it's a dense development, given the product type that we have. And again, the detached garages in the back. But we just could never get that kind of density with detached homes and the kind of product, which adds the affordability of this instead of having a stick-built project.
Okay, well, thank you. So the other question, and they're just looking at it, and particularly since we've been going through all the analysis on the fire season, there's small wood decks identified out the front and out the back. And I know, I mean, I did something 20 years ago with my extension where I put on some concrete decks. And I haven't had to do anything with them. The maintenance on them has been low. They're not a fire hazard. So I wonder if you could just speak to, you know, what's, why did you go with wood decks out the front and the back?
You know, I think I'm going to turn this one over to, I know what my limits are, to Sean Montoya, the project architect. Sean, if you wanted to take and speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, so, and I, in all candor, I do like concrete. But again, affordability being what it is, these wood decks don't necessarily have to be wood. They could be Trex, they could be some other material. And we do appreciate the idea that we did have some buyers. The remainder of the homes are, and we have a roof material and siding material that is, I believe, would be WOES certified if we needed it to be. So I think as far as the decks go here, if the concern is maintenance, that's something with the alternative material like Trex or one of those composite materials, which also helps with the fire resistance.
This is the landscape architect Andrea Chapman. Sorry to air it, but it does, on the detail, it's a little Sorry to air it, but it does, on the detail, it's a little misleading because it says six by 12 wood deck. But on the detail callouts, I call out Trex decking. So it is a Trex decking. Sorry about that.
Well, well, just to feed in, I know this is design detail and we're, you know, we're incorporating design really as part of this planning commission. I mean, 20 years ago, when I asked my builder to look at difference between a wood deck and a, and a concrete deck, it did actually come out more expensive on the wood deck. So, and I also, I, I have a duplex unit. And so part of it is a historical site where there's a wood deck for the rental side. And we did replace that with Trex, but the maintenance is just there. So I'm just, just flagging that as a potential lower cost option or just, you know, asking about it, that the concrete can be made more attractive with things like an acid wash. So, so maybe that's just something that could be, could be looked at if it's a lower cost option. When you actually put the slab in and when you do everything with the concrete people, I wouldn't think it's much extra. But just an item that I had when I was looking at it. I, I think that's the only questions I have. I appreciate all the effort that staffs put into this and all the people that have, have done extra work on this to make it affordable. I appreciate the overview. Actually, I got one other question. Who enforces or how does, when, when somebody comes to sell, when somebody comes to sell their house, not the land underneath it, but how do, what's the mechanics for saying that gee, this has to only go to somebody who's within the affordability framework? Who, who does that? Does that come back to the city to review it? Who's on the checklist?
This is Dev Gatchis with Housing Plan Trust. That is what we do as part of our stewardship. So the resale restriction in the resale formula that says that you will sell to someone that's in the same income level that you were in, that is embedded in the ground lease. So the, the ground lease dictates the price of the house. So if someone wants to sell, and we've had 16 resales, the homeowner lets us know and then we qualify the next buyer. So it's affordable to them and we manage the entire sales transaction, marketing, all of it.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. I, I have seen that model, I mean, at least on the, the ground lease owned by somebody else. And in this case, it's owned in community trust. I really much, very much appreciate that. So do appreciate all the detail and the effort that everybody's put into this to try and bring some, create some more affordable housing. Thank you. That's me.
All right, so I'm the last one to actually have a couple of questions. In the, in the garages in the back, there are two car garage and then they have an existing one space for a visitor. And then there's outside parking. So I'm just curious, because we've had this concern over at Santara Way, is that those garages were supposed to be used for cars and they were filled up with, you know, people's stuff. So is there a way to say that those, those garages have to be used for cars? Or is there some kind of way to, yeah, to deal with that?
Well, this is staff. There's, there's limits in the ability of the city to, to dictate how the, the garages themselves are used. However, I will say the fact that the design doesn't, it's not a typical design where you have your, your garage and then your parking apron, where you can, you know, easily park on your property and use your garage for storage. That combined with the fact that it's kind of already somewhat tight parking situation on Ryan Lane. It, it kind of, it pushes the motivation towards actually utilizing the parking. But I absolutely acknowledge and understand that Santara Way has somewhat of a similar situation and has experienced parking overflows.
Also, this is Steve LaFranchi. We also tried to design the garages. And as you can see, some of these little dash lines, but we wanted to provide so there's an opportunity on the sides for shelving that, you know, for some available storage. Because we didn't have a lot for depth. A lot of times you'll see garages, they add some extra depth to it. So it involves some storage. So what we did in this case, we added to that some width to be able to at least provide some ability to have some shelving on the sides.
Great. I think that was my, my, one of my only questions. The, the one thing I do say on the, on the gate that's on the rear of the property that is accessed by emergency vehicles, is that an electronic gate or?
It is electronic, that's correct.
Okay, and so the access to fire is done automatically or how does that work?
That's, that's correct. They essentially have, for lack of a better word, a remote control or almost like a garage door opener, but for the gate. And it's set up specifically for emergency vehicle access.
Okay, so during the fire, some of those gates, like up in Oakmont, that were electronic, had no power?
This is correct. And so there's a condition that this, these gate designs, and this one specifically, in the, in the event of a lack of power, it has to fail to unlock.
Okay, great.
That's a good point though.
Yeah. I had a couple of people lose their animals that way. Okay, well, those were my only questions. I'm going to open this up to the public if anyone would like to speak on this item.
I see nobody showing, raising their hand.
Okay, great. So then I'm going to close the public comment on this and ask the commissioners if they have any other questions of staff?
Actually, I got one other question. So on the parking, when I was looking around there this afternoon, there's a lot of signs saying that the parking is only for local owners. And obviously, that's a, a, a big question with the Smarttrain very close by. But how is that, is that enforceable? Or are those signs, what are they, where do those signs come from?
So through this is Noah, also staff. So the, through the review of this project, the conversations with some of the adjacent HOA members and leadership, it appears that there's pretty substantial parking conflicts going on kind of between the two neighboring HOAs. And, and they've kind of taken measures back and forth to try to assert ownership or privilege over the use of some of the, the street parking on Ryan Lane. And, and that has included the creation of a, of a parking sticker system that's been kind of, I, I would describe as a little bit arbitrarily enforced as a part of that conflict amongst those, those neighboring developments. In my discussion with one of the HOA presidents, I provided them a copy, a full copy of the access and use easements in the agreement, which they didn't have. And it, and it talked about that everyone has equal access rights, all three parties. So this site and the other two sites to that kind of public portion of Ryan Lane that's supposed to function as a public street. However, it is privately owned and apparently some folks have, have taken measures to try to protect some of that parking.
So, so it would seem that, I mean, the local communities could, and presumably the hope would be that they would collectively do that to their own benefit rather than, and that this, this Ryan Lane, this new Jamie Lane could be incorporated part of that? Or will the HOA be a separate entity?
So they will be a separate entity, but this development is an equal party to the Ryan Lane access and maintenance requirements equally allocated on a per unit basis per the agreement.
Yeah, this is again, Steve LaFranchi, just to pick up a little bit on what Noah's saying. So there's, there's two. There's the Willow Creek Association, which is part of the Ryan Lane. So the parking that's in front of the Ryan Lane project is part of the Willow Creek. And that's part of the all agreement. It goes back to the Brian Miller Agreement. And that is, that's, that's the parking that's part of that association. Across the street from, from the Ryan Lane project, I'm headed out towards East Catati Avenue, belongs to a totally different HOA. And that's exclusive for their, their use. And so the, you know, I talked to both HOA folks as well. And as Noah was saying in the beginning, it's a civil matter, it's private. I recommended that they, they provide, you know, some signage. And, and, and also if they, they go to a sticker system or something. So they can, you know, they can enforce. The police aren't going to come in there and, and ticket people because it's private. But, you know, they, they collectively, and I talked to even the towing company, has gotten involved in the, in the mix of all this. And it's just that, you know, it's pretty clear to me and the agreements that the, our project has rights to one side of it and that's all of the, the project behind us. That's the only rights. And the other side of the street is, we have no rights. Nobody has any rights to it except for the other association adjacent to that parking. And that's, you know, that's, that's the way the easements read and the agreements read.
So the, the, the parking in front of this, which is part of Ryan Lane, technically that, or legally, that is part of the Willow Creek, the more the visitor parking. The back end, the back northeastern side.
Right, it's not designated, it's open parking, but it's, it's, it's for that association.
And so the new Jamie Lane, when it comes in, we'll just have to live with that?
Right, there's one space to come in because of all, everything that was said about the, the safety and the access that comes off of Ryan Lane. One of those spaces is going to be eliminated. But again, we're offering two covered and one uncovered spaces for each one of the lots, which, you know, exceeds the, the parking requirements in itself. But again, I just to be clear, and I know there's been a lot of back and forth and discussion even, even prior to this meeting with, with the neighbors and the associations about the parking and the parking rights. And, and I, and the exhibits and the documents I sent out, I think it's, it's very, very, very clear. And what I've said to everybody, they really didn't have much to say coming back to me or we talked about it, but I think it was clear to them. And it's just an unfortunate situation that if the two associations could work together and just kind of have joint enforcement between them, you know, they'd probably be, you know, better off.
Right, well, it's going to be probably more the norm as there's more densification that happens around.
That's, that, that is absolutely true.
So, yeah, okay, well, thank you very much. That's my comments.
All right, does anyone else have any other questions of staff?
One more question.
Sure.
We were talking about the change in density in these units and particularly due to the fact that just the material or type of housing we're using here. I was wondering if the applicant could provide a little bit more information about this type of housing, specific to how it holds up over the years?
This is, this is Mark Westphal. Maybe I can answer some of those questions. And we've already kind of gone through the floor plans a little bit. But let's talk a little bit about manufactured housing and factory built pieces that are intricate in housing. So these homes are built in a, in a factory. But they're not just factory built homes. It started out many years ago where factories only built trusses and roof trusses and parts and they were delivered. These are completely built in a factory, in a closed environment, all controlled environment. And then what happened last couple of years, Fannie Mae came out with a program that said, we, you know, what we want to do is we want to be able to provide homes that are single family homes built in a factory. So what has to happen? And what has to happen is you have to really upgrade your building standards to compete with every other home in the market. So they created the program called MH Advantage. MH Advantage is manufactured housing advantage, which is through Fannie Mae. And what it means is, is that these homes are going to be built, and I'll give you some of the, just some of the basic specifics, but your exterior walls are going to be two by six construction versus two by four. You're going to have a higher roof pitch. You're going to have dormers, you're going to have 20 year roofs. You're going to have, as you see on the floor plans or on the exterior elevations, some front porches, we're going to be doing rear decks. These are all energy efficient homes, meaning that they have, you know, Energy Star ratings. So your insulation is significant in the floors even, which comes out to a value of R38. Your walls are roughly R21, ceilings are R40. Your appliances are all energy efficient. Your exterior, some of the, the sidings are going to be concrete, they're fiber material. And when you put all this together in a factory and then you bring it and deliver it to where it's going, it's not going on just, you know, a block. These are going to be on concrete foundations. These are permanent foundations, which make them single family homes. And they compare no different to any other home in the neighborhood. And the beauty of being able to do this in a factory is you're able to try to make these homes wherever you're building, you can design them to fit into that community so that they don't look any different, they don't comp any different, and they provide incredible shelter. They're no different than the homes that you would buy, you know, in a brand new subdivision. And so I hope that that gives a little bit of clarity to the longevity of these homes.
All right, great. So I'm going to bring you back to the commission. I just have one other comment on, for me, is I know modified, we have modular homes on the other side of our creek in our subdivision on the Bird section. And they've been there for over 30 years. And they still look great. So, and I know, not too many people know that those are modulars over there, modified homes. Is everybody, do I need, anybody have any questions? Anybody want to do the discussion of this project?
I, I could start.
All right.
I, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I think it looks pretty good. I'm a, I understand why the density is smaller, but it's also for the area, it would be nicer if that density could have been a little bit more. But I appreciate the context. So it seems like a pretty good situation. I really appreciate that there's some affordable housing and, and the model on this. So I, I think it looks pretty good.
Steve, any comments, any discussion?
I'm very pleased with the entire presentation and the entire concept.
Great. Sylvia, any?
Yes, I also am very happy with the presentation. And I'm just glad there's homes for families and people, especially with all the disasters we've had and now the pandemic. It just feels like the right time, you know, to, to move on a project like this. So I, I'm happy about it.
Good. Brittany, any other comments or questions? Great. I am, I'm in agreement. I think this is, project's been around for a very long time. And it would be wonderful if it actually could get, come to fruition. So with that, do I have someone to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. So I'll make a motion for the planning commission, the resolution of the planning commission of the City of Catati finding the Jamie Lane five lot residential subdivision exempt from the requirements of CECLAR under A Class 32 categorical exemption and recommending city council adoption of a resolution to approve a vesting tentative map and design review to allow the construction of five single family deed restricted homes on a 0.67 acre unaddressed parcel 144-301-012 in the neighborhood medium density zoning district.
And do I, and do I have a second?
I second it. This is Sylvia.
All right, and do I roll call, please?
Commissioner Leven.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nite.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Vice Chair McCannick.
Barely, barely Brittany.
Yes, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Chair Moore.
Yes. And I wanted to say thank you to all the participants on the call. You're more than welcome to stay on, but thank you for all the information.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations on the...
Congratulations on the, on the division.
Yes.
Thank you very, very much.
All right. We're going to move on to reports by staff.
Well, actually, Chair Moore, this is JP. We have a presentation on vehicle miles traveled.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. We do. I'm sorry. I didn't see that. So yes, vehicle miles, travel, presentation.
Okay. And then just bear with me one second while I take control of the presentation. Lauren, do I have control?
JP should be all yours.
I'm assuming it's the up-down button, left-right. Nothing seems to be working.
Yeah, it should be left-right.
Yeah, it does not seem to be giving me control, Lauren.
Okay. Go ahead with your presentation and just let me know when to move on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Moore and members of the commission. For the record, my name is John Paul Harries, and I'm a senior planner with the city of Cattati. And tonight, we're going to be talking about Senate Bill 743 and what it means for evaluation, for evaluating transportation impacts under CEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. And just before I start, the presentation is a little bit long and it's dense. And in parts, it's a little bit technical. And I'm not a traffic engineer. So if we get to the end and you have questions, I will certainly do my best to field your questions. But do you know that this will be coming back to you again when we develop the thresholds? And if there are really technical questions, I will have someone from the Sonoma County Transportation Authority present to help answer those questions. But tonight, it'll be helpful just to know what, where those questions might be and if there are. Okay. So with that, Lauren, we can proceed. So Senate Bill 743 was signed by the governor in 2013. And it significantly changes how transportation impacts are going to be considered in the Environmental Quality Act, which is CEQA. Previously, we would utilize what's called LOS or Level of Service, which was a measure of congestion. Under the Senate Bill 743, LOS or congestion can no longer be used to estimate transportation impacts under CEQA. The big difference is they want a traffic impact measurement or metric that really addresses regional level impacts as opposed to specific intersection or specific roadway intersections. The legislation charges the Office of Planning and Research to develop the metric. And they came up with vehicle miles traveled as a metric that should be used. And we'll be talking about that quite a bit here. Okay. Next slide, Lauren. Before we get into that, though, I think it's important to kind of step back and give a big, broad overview of CEQA. I know we have two new commissioners, and you're going to hear a lot about CEQA every time we meet. So I think it's helpful to go over a little bit of that. And for those of you that have been with us, a little review never hurts. So CEQA was created in 1970, and it's California's broadest environmental law. It, in a sense, helps to guide the city during our issuance of permits and approval of projects. It applies to all discretionary projects proposed to be conducted or approved by the city. And that, by the way, is our lovely salamander, our California tiger salamander that we have here in Cattati. And next slide, Lauren. So the law itself is embodied within the California Public Resources Code at the sections listed there. In addition to that, there's a body of rules in the California Code of Regulations called the CEQA Guidelines. And those are essentially administrative regulations that govern the implementation of CEQA. They do reflect the requirements of the Public Resources Code. And they include court decisions that reflect how the code should be interpreted as well as how CEQA should be implemented. And it also incorporates practical fighting considerations. In addition to those two bodies of law, there's also court decisions which have a significant effect on how CEQA is implemented. I think every year, I probably attend two full-day seminars just on laws and court cases that change the way or interpret how CEQA is to be implemented. And it's definitely a big part of shaping the body of law that is CEQA. And then tied to the CEQA law itself, there are the federal, state, and city regulations, plans, and adopted policies. CEQA itself is not, doesn't govern land use. And I'll talk about that a little more. But our regulations inform really what comes down to what are called the thresholds of significance for when you're evaluating impacts under CEQA. Next slide. So the purpose of CEQA, first and foremost, is to disclose. When CEQA documents are created, they are disclosure documents. As I mentioned before, you know, CEQA doesn't guide land use policies. It doesn't tell you what you can and can't do. Rather, CEQA tries to disclose both to the public and the decision-makers the significant environmental effects of a proposed project. And it does that through the documents that are filed and presented. And those can range from just a simple initial study, which is pretty much where all CEQA analyses start. And then if a project won't have a significant impact, you can file a negative declaration. But even those negative declarations will often go into depth about what the potential impacts are, could be, and why they're not significant. And then if there are significant environmental impacts that can't be mitigated, then it would go on to what's called an environmental impact report, which is a fairly lengthy and extensive process to go through. Also, the CEQA helps to notify the public, you know, what the decision-making process was to approve discretionary projects. And we do that through findings. And if there are going to be significant environmental impacts and the decision-makers still want to approve the project, then they would have to file what's called a statement of overriding consideration. And that's where there are socioeconomic reasons that the city may want to approve a project, even though it may have significant environmental effects. So in addition, CEQA's intent is also to prevent or minimize damage. And it does that through looking at project alternatives, mitigation measures, as well as monitoring of those mitigation measures. Also, CEQA is intended to enhance public participation in the environmental review process. And that occurs through scoping meetings when an environmental impact report is being repaired, a public notices, public review of the environmental documents. Often, they have to be circulated. And it depends on the document, but anywhere from 30 to 60 days. And sometimes they're even circulated longer. As well as the public hearings, and then there's the judicial review process during court challenges. And then also, part of the purpose of CEQA is to improve inter-agency coordination. And we do that through early consulting with various departments that might have some review authority over the project. For example, California Fish and Wildlife. And we do that through scoping meetings as well and through notices of preparation. And then the State Clearinghouse is where we will send the documents. And then Clearinghouse will send it to all the various agencies around the state that might have an interest in the project. And that helps us to get their comments as we move through the CEQA process. Next slide. And then broadly, these are the environmental areas that CEQA will look at. It ranges from qualitative things like aesthetics to more quantitative things like air quality. And as you can see, I've got highlighted here, transportation impacts, which is what we're going to be talking about today. Tribal cultural resources, wildfire, as well as the cumulative impacts of any in particular project. Okay. Next slide. I know this one looks a little confusing, but it's actually, this is a flow chart of the process, but it's actually a fairly straightforward process. Essentially, at the very top of the chart, we begin by evaluating whether or not the project qualifies as a project under CEQA. And there's a definition of what's a project. For example, if the city buys office supplies or purchases a vehicle, those are not projects under CEQA. And it has to be really be a discretionary act where we're approving either a plan or a project. Along that notion, issuance of building permits falls outside of CEQA. And then if we do determine it is a project, then we evaluate whether or not it has an impact and if those impacts can be mitigated. And then really, the city falls down this middle column, the lead agency. We are typically the lead agencies on any project within the city. And so we are required to determine whether or not the project will have an impact, what thresholds should be considered, what documents should be filed, and what agencies should be consulted with. So it's actually a pretty straightforward. Next, also, next slide, Lauren. And so tonight, we're really talking about this section up here is evaluating whether or not a project has an impact. Okay. Move on. Thank you. So when you're evaluating a environmental, potential environmental impact, one of the things you look at is what is a threshold of significance? And the CEQA guidelines define what goes into a threshold of significance. And essentially, a threshold is a level of a particular environmental effect. And it means that if you comply with the environmental, you know, the standard or threshold, if you're in compliance with it or below it, then that would be less than a significant effect, and the project can proceed. If there's a non-compliance or you're exceeding the threshold, then we would determine that the project would have a significant environmental effect. And then in that case, we would look for mitigation elements. And if they couldn't be met, then the city would have to process what's called a statement of overriding consideration. Next. So the CEQA guidelines also state that each public agency is encouraged to develop and publish thresholds of significance. When we do that, they must be adopted by ordinance, resolution, rule, or regulation. And just so you know, some of our thresholds that the city does have, they're often embedded within our plans, like our general plan, for example. And those are done through a public review process, and they have to be supported by substantial evidence. Additionally, we can also use thresholds on a case-by-case basis. Even if we were to adopt thresholds of significance, there's always a chance that a project could present environmental impacts that are not addressed by the particular threshold. And we have to consider any fair argument or any fair reason why there might be a significant impact. Okay. And then also, when we are developing thresholds of significance, we can rely on previously adopted or recommended by other public agencies or recommended by experts, provided those are supported by substantial evidence. And this is a little important for tonight's discussion because what you're going to find is, as we move forward, I believe we're going to probably be going with the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, their recommendations for VMT thresholds. They've done a lot of work on it, plus they established the VMT standard. And there's good reasoning behind the thresholds that they're recommending that we use. Also, we can use adopted environmental standards. So that means like, for example, if there's a certain air quality level, for example, only so much ozone or carbon monoxide in the air, we can use those standards as thresholds of significance. Okay. Next slide, please. Okay. So now, I'm going to get, talk a little bit about evaluating transportation impacts. Next slide, Lauren. Thank you. So currently, what we've been using, or I should say previously what we've been using, and actually still is an important part of our planning process, is called Level of Service. And Level of Service is really nothing more than a measure of delay or congestion. It's usually described in seconds of delay per vehicle at an intersection or section of roadway. So, and those seconds of delays are assigned a score of A through F. So for example, if you're looking at a specific intersection, and you see that graph on the right, as the traffic, as the traffic increases going through the intersection, the speed at which cars can travel through that intersection declines. And as the ability to travel through that intersection decreases or, you know, the delay increases, the score gets worse. So A being free-flow conditions, and F being pretty congested, congested conditions, where there can be significantly noticeable delay. Also, LOS looks at specific intersections and specific pieces of roadway. So it's not a regional look, but rather a very focused look. And then one of the things with LOS is it does not measure kind of the vibrancy of an area. If you're like within a downtown commercial area where that might be okay, it doesn't take that into consideration. It also doesn't take in walkability and ability of a pedestrian to cross the street or the bikeability and how an intersection accommodates bicycles. Next slide. So this is the criteria that we use today. And this comes largely, this is kind of standardized criteria, but which reflected in our general plan. And kind of the red on the bottom shows the threshold that we've established under LOS. And that would be, you know, you can't, for example, on the right side, for a signalized intersection, you can't go past a score of D or, you know, have delays of more than 55 seconds. And that's a pretty solid threshold. We do, for two-way stop control intersections, we do allow for E and F. But that's only under certain circumstances where like the intersection as a whole might operate really well, but it's just certain turn. well, but it's just certain turn movements that may have E or F scores. So this is what's going away under CEQA. We will no longer be allowed to use this in determining when there is a significant environmental impact. So today, if a project comes in and we, and you know, through a traffic analysis, determine that it would cause an intersection to go, for example, a signalized intersection from a D to an F, then the project applicant would be obligated to look for mitigation. And typically, that would take the form of, like at a signalized intersection, it might take the form of adding additional turn lane, or changing the phasing of the signals, or just all around, just adding capacity to that intersection. So that would be typically would have to be done today. And then if we did want to approve it despite those, again, we'd have to go to an overriding consideration. Okay, next slide, please. So, what is wrong with LOS? Why is the state wanting to change it? Well, if you look at the image on the left, this is level of service A. That's a traffic engineer's dream. There's, you know, no congestion. However, if you look at the land uses along that strip of road, they're all very far apart and there's really nowhere to go to. And it's not really conducive for pedestrians or bikers. Serves cars well, but it doesn't serve kind of infill, higher-density planning, unlike what you see on the right, which would have a very poor score under level of service and is often what people and communities want to achieve. Next slide. So our question is, which is better? On the left side, you have a forty-five commute, but you have five minutes of congestion. On the right side, you have a twenty-minute commute, but there's ten minutes of congestion. LOS would favor the forty-five-minute commute because it only has five minutes of congestion. Remember, LOS is measuring delay. And it would discourage a twenty-minute commute with ten minutes of congestion, even though that might work a lot better for people because it has more delay than the five-minute example. And this is kind of where planning has been, not to, but traffic engineering has been going. It's been favoring far less congestion, even if it means a longer commute versus a little more congestion with a shorter commute. Okay, next slide, please. And then this is an example kind of of how it affects infill development. So you can see in that tight grid pattern, here's a proposed project. Next slide. And the little batches indicate where that traffic would go within that grid-like pattern. Next slide. Though, even though it's an infill project, and so it doesn't, it tends not to generate as much cars as some of those other developments on the outside, it tends to create a lot of LOS impacts because all of those impacts tend to be focused in a certain area. Also, the disadvantage is that when you're doing infill development, it's always kind of the last few people in that have to pay all the prices. So, SUSTIS has been developed already and, you know, these people would have to come in and try to address each of those LOS impacts. Otherwise, they would be significant under CEQA. And so in a way, it tends to discourage that infill development because of the number of impacts that are created. Okay, next slide. And then, so if we look at greenfield development, next slide. It, that greenfield will tend to put traffic on, it tends to put more cars because the folks that are in this greenfield development tend not to have stores and shops and things that they can walk to. So they typically drive much more and put more cars on the road. But those routes tend to be dispersed throughout the network and throughout the region. Next slide. And then, so the result is, under LOS, there's very little LOS impact identified, maybe perhaps this one intersection that they might have to address. But what it tends to ignore is the overall loading onto the whole regional transportation network. And this is what happens a lot. So, and Cattati, I think, suffers from it. So we have development going on around us. A lot of times, that development, you know, is not looking at specific impacts within Cattati because, well, you know, the impacts would be almost unmeasurable with each individual project. But cumulatively, over time, they really start to add up on the regional transportation system. But LOS is not capturing that. And this is kind of an, you know, sort of an example of how that, why that, the way that is. Okay, next slide, please. So, in general, what's wrong with LOS, especially according to the office of planning and research, is LOS tends to worsen overall congestion. In traffic analysis, there's something called Braze's Paradox. And this is where, if you improve, let's say you identify a problem at a particular intersection because of traffic loading, so you increase the capacity of that intersection, what often happens is you, overall, you're not actually increasing, or decreasing the time that it might take to get someplace. What happens is often the problem just moves down the road to another intersection, and often that can actually make the whole situation worse. And that's what's happening in California today, is as we tend to focus on LOS, the whole system is getting greater and greater impact. LOS tends to worsen access to destinations because you're encouraged to develop outside of developed areas. LOS assessments are time-consuming. You actually have to go out there and measure and count traffic and count delay. They can be quite expensive and they're only estimates, so they can also be somewhat inaccurate. It discourages infill development and tends to promote sprawl. It increases the travel lengths that drivers have to drive. It discourages mode shift. And what I mean by that is, it discourages people from getting out of their cars and walking and biking. And that kind of goes with the next one, which is, it typically results in less transit and less active transportation, like walking and biking. Less transit because you don't have the density population to serve the transit, and it's creates longer distances for transit to travel in order to serve the people that would be on that line. It tends to have poor outcomes for the environment, and that's because typically, when you have poor, the answer is more pavement. So it means more land coverage, more habitat fragmentation. And it reduces people's health because if they're not, if it's easier for them to drive than, and there are fewer opportunities to walk or bike, then they tend to be less active. As well as, when there's greater cars and they're traveling at higher speeds, there's a definite increase in injury and deaths. So, next slide. So what is VMT? What is it that the state wants us to switch to? Well, I guess, VMT is really, it's the amount of vehicular travel across the entire transportation system, rather than looking at specific points. And we usually talk about VMT in terms of per person, like how much is an individual resident or an individual employee contributing to the regional transportation system. It's not a measure of congestion. It's really miles and the numbers of trips. And that's, in the simplest method, it's really the number of trips that a project would generate times the trip length. And then, on the bottom, as you can see, I've highlighted, you cannot measure VMT directly. This is, it can only be estimated through traffic counts using traffic models or other data sources and methods. So it's a little bit unlike LOS where you can actually go out there and measure exactly what the delay is. It does require more sophisticated modeling, but it does have a regional look and it tends to be a little more accurate in terms of the loading on the regional system. Next slide, please. And don't get hung up on the numbers here. Essentially, this is like just trying to talk about what a trip is. So, you know, let's say you're at your house, or you're at your office in Windsor, and you drive into Santa Rosa. Well, that's a trip. And that has so much distance to it. And while you're in Santa Rosa, you may do a little back and forth, do some shopping, and those also have, contribute to VMT. And then maybe you go out to Sonoma. And then, so there's trips associated with that process. Next slide, please. So, VMT can be estimated in many different ways. And I don't want to get into some of the technical stuff tonight, but there's ways you can look at, is a trip coming from the home? Is it an individual trip? Is it a tour-based trip? There's a number of different ways to look at VMT. And to be quite honest, we're still wrestling with what is the best way for Sonoma County and the communities within Sonoma County. And there's different ways for different types of uses. For example, residential projects, we're going to be looking probably at home-based trips. And for office projects, we'll be looking at the trips associated with commutes. And with retail, we'll probably be looking at total VMT and changes in total VMT. Go on, next slide, please. And I don't want to stray with that, but this is just an example of some of the, it's just an image of an intersection along Highway 101 and how, what comes out of some of these travel models. But every roadway, and Sonoma County Transportation Authority, by the way, maintains the travel model for Sonoma County, but every roadway segment, there are known traffic counts on those roadways, and there's an estimate of where that traffic is going and how long those trips are. And next slide. And then, what you're, part of the way that's done is, the county is divided up into little areas, and that's what this is showing. Each of those areas are called traffic analysis zones, or TAS for short. And with each, within each of those zones, we know the number of trip origins and what attractors are there, and from big data, like cellphone monitoring, we actually know what the trip lengths are in general between those various traffic analysis zones. Next slide. So, this is data, most recent data I could get from Sonoma County Transit Authority. And you can see, I did just start on, you know, Cattati's right there on the top, but on the left, the residential VMT, you can see the number of vehicle miles traveled for Cattati versus the other jurisdictions, as well as the county-wide totals. And then moving across, you can see how we can start to break that down by the residential VMT per capita, so how much is each person generating per day? And that, you know, that's averaged out to include everybody, not just drivers. As well, we can look at how much each worker is generating per day. And those are the, those are the numbers that we're looking at right now. Okay, next slide, please. So why the change of VMT? Well, it's considered to be the best umbrella metric for transportation impacts and the statewide goals. Particularly, the three goals that were expressed in the legislation, SB 743, there's three primary goals, which is to promote infill development, promote public health through active transportation, and reduce the amount of greenhouse gas emissions. So it touches on all three of those areas. I talked a little bit about infill development. I'll talk a little bit more about the others as we proceed here. Also, it's already easy to, fairly easy to assess, and it's already being used in CEQA. We do look at VMT when we're looking at air quality impacts and noise impacts and greenhouse gas emissions, specifically those three. We use VMT models to help us estimate what those impacts would be. So it's not completely unfamiliar. What we haven't done, though, is establish thresholds specifically for transportation, you know, where X amount of VMT is too much and X minus sum is okay. Also, the state has concluded that we really need to take action on VMT now. I'm going to talk about this a little more. But in order to meet our long-term greenhouse gas reduction goals, we have to start changing the way transportation is done now. Otherwise, we're going to run up to the deadlines in 2030 and 2050, and it will be too late to try to, to try to make some of the changes. Additionally, it does result in project streamlining for a number of projects. We'll talk about those. It decreases travel lengths and it decreases time. It helps to encourage mode shift, getting out of the car. It promotes transit and active transportation, and it tends to be better for the environment because of less land coverage, less habitat fragmentation, less landscaping and irrigation, and typically, less energy used for buildings and transportation when you're developing in a more infill area. And it increases health because it encourages walking and biking, and it decreases injury and death due to car accidents. Next slide, please. So for example, project streamlining. So, there's a number of projects that OPR is recommending, just going to be, not so much exempt, but be considered to have less than a significant impact. And that will really help speed up or streamline the review of some of these projects. So projects near transit, for example, probably won't have to, or they'll be considered to be less than significant. Now, there's always a chance that there might be something that would make the impacts be significant, so you always have to look at that. But in general, these are the type of projects where they will probably be considered to be less than significant. So projects near transit, most infill development, affordable housing, centrally-located offices, locally-serving retail, transit projects, bike projects, like added bike lanes or bike paths, pedestrian enhancements or crosswalks, even though that may contribute to congestion. It would not be considered an impact under CEQA today, whereas previously it might, previously it would have, maybe. Street safety improvements, so if you want to do traffic calming, even though it may contribute to congestion, it would not be a significant impact under CEQA today. And low VMT areas, and we can develop screening maps, and I have some examples of what that might look like. Next slide. So why the changes to VMT? Again, public health. According to the governor's office of planning and research, physical inactivity leads to approximately 21,000 deaths annually in California. And VMT mitigation helps to achieve state mode share targets, which will reduce deaths by approximately 2,000 annually and prevent $1 to $15 billion in expenditures on premature deaths and disability annually. Next slide, please. And this is to an image I actually cut from a presentation that OPR was giving. giving. But it shows that in the most compact counties, those that have the least amount of sprawl and the sprawl index in this, uh, the higher the number, the less sprawl, so the better you are in terms of sprawl. Um, significantly lower deaths per 100,000 compared to those type of counties that tend to have a lot of sprawl, higher speeds, um, better LOS, but, um, much higher rates of death in, uh, in traffic accidents. Next slide, please. Also, greenhouse gas emissions. Um, what this graph is showing you, um, is about 37% of, uh, VMT, uh, excuse me, greenhouse gas emissions is tied directly to transportation. That's a significant amount. Plus, if you look at the transportation-related, uh, industries, half of that is tied, or excuse me, if you look at industrial, uh, industries, half of that is tied just to producing, uh, the gas and the fuel to make, to, to, to fuel the transportation sector. So essentially, half of our transportation, half of our greenhouse gas emissions are coming from the transportation sector. So this is where we need to focus our efforts in order to meet our greenhouse gas reduction goals. And I've only included two. There are many, and of various bills as well as executive orders with targets, but these are two of the primary ones related to greenhouse gas emissions and transportation. And the city has adopted these targets as well. So, uh, what the state wants to do in terms of going to VMT to address greenhouse gas is in align with, uh, where the city, uh, it, it shares the city's goals as well. Next slide, please. And, um, to bring it home a little closer, the slides are kind of remarkable because they actually show how closely VMT is tied to our greenhouse gas emissions. Um, they, they almost look identical, but they're not. One is VMT and the other is greenhouse gas emissions, but that's how closely the two are tied. And as you look at the graph, you know, as VMT goes up, you notice greenhouse gas emissions go up, goes up. There's something a little weird going on with unincorporated Sonoma County, um, and we haven't figured out where that's coming from, but across every other one, um, it's pretty consistent that as you increase VMT, you increase greenhouse gas emissions. Next slide. And, um, and this is kind of the problem. That blue line is CO2 per capita on a statewide basis and the green dots are where we need to go, um, in terms of our goals, uh, through the executive orders as well as the legislation. So we have to make progress in dropping the amount of VMT per capita in order to achieve our goals. Next slide. And I think, uh, the California Air Resources Board said it perfectly. It says, "With emissions from the transportation sector continuing to rise despite increases in fuel efficiency and decreases in the carbon content of fuel, California will not achieve the necessary greenhouse gas emission reductions to meet mandates for 2030 and beyond without significant changes to how communities and transportation systems are planned, funded, and built." Next slide. So with that background, I'm going to talk a little bit about the thresholds of significance and, uh, that, also it helps to explain why OPR is recommending the thresholds that, that they are and what I believe we'll probably be recommending that we go with. So, next slide, please. So based on their research as well as the need for VMT reduction in order to meet the state's goals, OPR is essentially recommending that a per capita or per employee VMT that is 15% below that of existing development. Um, further, there's been studies to show that 15% reductions in VMT are achievable at a variety of different places. Next slide, please. So, I talked about how certain, uh, projects would be screened out. Here's a more specific example. So small projects would probably be screened out. They would be considered to have less than a significant impact and those would be projects that generate or attract less than 110 trips per day. Um, also, projects within one-half mile of a major transit stop and SMART is considered a major transit stop, they would be, um, considered to have less than significant impacts. Uh, 100% affordable housing projects, like the project we just looked at today, would be considered for a couple of reasons, but would be considered to have less than a significant impact on VMT. Um, transit projects and active transportation projects like bikes, bike lanes and sidewalks would be less than significant. Uh, reductions in roadway capacity and traffic calming, as well as map-based screening. And these are areas that are considered to have low VMT and it's supposed that, uh, development within these areas would also have low VMT. Um, and if you go to the next slide, I have an example of that, of a screening. Now, I don't know if this is a screening map we would use. This is something that, um, I'm still working with SCTA over, you know, what are the best screening maps. But basically, the dark green areas would be the areas where for a residential housing project, we would screen those out and say, any residential housing project in this area, um, would probably have less than a significant effect because it's already, it would be developed in what we would call a low VMT area. And it's low VMT because it's 15% below the existing VMT. If you recall on that one slide, we're approximately 19-something VMT for residents. So 85% of that gets us to about 16.5. So anything less than that would be screened out. Uh, wouldn't, wouldn't have to go through, uh, significant VMT analysis and would be considered less than significant. Projects outside that area, we would have to take a closer look at that for sure. And next slide. And this is an example of, um, how office development screening map might work. So you can see the half-mile circle around transit as well as other areas that are considered low VMT. This map's a little bit different, uh, than the one you just saw, but it essentially shows the same thing and it's based on those traffic analysis zones. And again, this is something that we're working on with SCTA to determine if, uh, if these maps are, uh, should be used. Okay, next slide, please. So, um, after we've screened out the projects, then what would be the thresholds that we would be looking at? So for residential projects, the recommendation is 15% below existing VMT per capita. And there's two ways we can look at that. We can compare it to the regional VMT or the city VMT. And again, this is another discussion that SCTA and I are discussing, um, because there's difference. I mean, you know, one, we have higher VMT than the region as a whole, so we need to figure out which threshold do we want to use. And when it comes to residential projects, OPR is saying, yeah, it's really up to us what we want to do there. It's just that if we do use city-based VMT, we have to make sure that we're being consistent with, um, kind of the regional transportation plan, um, as well as the regional sustainable community strategy for the region. And essentially, that means we can't exceed the planned growth for the area. And that's probably not going to be a problem for us because they're encouraging us to grow more than I think we'd like. So, office projects, it would be 15% below existing regional VMT per employee. Retail projects, a little bit different because, um, retail is not really considered to be a new trip generator, um, because they tend to redistribute trips rather than create new trips. For example, if you're going to the grocery store, um, you're going to go to the grocery store one way or the other. Um, so what we'd be looking at with, with like a retail project is are you increasing total VMT? So is that grocery store farther away than, fair close to one or something, something along those lines? But would it increase total VMT as opposed to looking for specific reductions? And then with mixed-use projects, which is a big part of what we're promoting, um, we would have to evaluate each component independently and apply the threshold for each. So if it has, uh, residential above office, we would look at the office threshold, which would be VMT per employee. And for residence, we'd be looking at the VMT per capita. And then, you know, we have to apply a threshold for each as well as apply a credit, um, where we're capturing internal trips. So if there's a residence above the convenience store, you see that a lot, for example, in the cities, um, that, that store is going to capture some of the trips that that person might of other ways make. And so you can start to credit those type of projects for those kind of captured trips. Excellent. Redevelopment projects, um, so if it's redevelopment of a site, we'd be looking at no net overall increases in total VMT. Um, and an example of that would be if you tore down something but, um, and you, you've built in a local serving retail, a, a perfect example might be, again, the grocery store or St. Pete's Coffee, um, those would probably be less than significant. Uh, looking at land use plans, it's a little more complicated. We really have to look across the full area over which the plan could affect travel patterns. Um, and that means going outside of our boundaries because we all travel outside of, uh, you know, the city. And so we have to look at how all trips are generated. Those plans would have to, we would have to show that it's being consistent with the regional transportation plan as well as, um, sustainable community strategy. Um, it might include, looking at, include the thresholds that we have for office and residential, um, or it might take a different approach, but it'd probably be, be a much more focused look at the whole thing as well cue that the impacts really come into play with land use plans. And then for transportation projects, um, again, it's, we're going to be looking at the change in total VMT. And it probably would have to be analyzed on a case-by-case basis as opposed to, um, kind of general thresholds. Um, and part of that is because, and it's probably not going to be too much of a problem for Cattati because we're not really in the road building business. We don't add new highways or lanes. But if you're adding capacity to a roadway by adding a lane, for example, or building a new road, that could be an increase in VMT. You could be either inducing the amount of, uh, you know, encouraging travel by making it just that much more attractive to, to drive, or you could actually even be increasing the trip length. Um, on the other hand, if, um, we were to reduce roadway capacity or include bike lanes, um, those would not be considered, uh, significant impacts. And next slide. So, there are ways to mitigate, uh, VMT and they're very different than they're, than they are from mitigating LOS. And primarily, the difference is in LOS, uh, the mitigation is to, you basically have, you're required to, to increase capacity. Um, in general, VMT looks at a range of different options that would, and I've got, I've kind of listed a whole, there's, there's more that you could do, but it would be things like improve access to transit, improve access to goods and services. So mixed-use development becomes important there and the diversity of uses, uh, becomes important. Uh, incorporate affordable housing into the project becomes, uh, a mitigation element. Um, EV charging stations can help, uh, reduce, though, though it doesn't adjust VMT, it does get to the greenhouse gas, uh, issues. Improving pedestrian or bicycle networks, uh, traffic calming, bike parking, carpooling, and actually telework of, what we're noticing now is tremendous drops in VMT while everybody, well, well, some people aren't working, there's a lot of people that are teleworking like me right now, were not contributing to any VMT, uh, to the network. So there are a lot of mitigation techniques. The other thing about teleworking is we're finding out that it actually can work. I think there was a lot of apprehension, uh, previously, but we're now seeing that it is a workable situation for a lot of employees. And next slide. And so, the next steps are, I want to be able to hear any commission feedback and public feedback. Uh, there's still a little bit of work that we need to do with the SCTA to determine the appropriate thresholds and that's, this is more technical stuff like which metrics to use and how to present the information, um, the development of some of those screening maps, and then, uh, kind of preparing the resolution, which would include the thresholds. I'll just say that the direction I'm going in today, um, is to go with the OPR's recommendation. Uh, because they are tied to greenhouse gas reduction, because they're tied to statewide goals, which are, which mirror the city's goals, they seem like the most appropriate and, um, the most backed up with, uh, substantial evidence, uh, as the ones to do. If we were to embark on our own process and leave OPR behind and just decide what our own VMT thresholds are, we can do that, but, um, it would be a substantial effort, substantially extensive and, uh, time-consuming. And I believe that's it. Next slide, please. Yeah, that, that's it for my presentation. So I know that was dense and maybe a little quick, but, uh, I was, you know, happy to answer any questions and, um, and with that, I'll leave it. Thank you.
All right.
And, yes, hopefully you're still awake out there.
Yeah, I think we're, we're all still here. Um, so I'm going to start with any questions that any of us have. I'll start with Sylvia.
Hi, um, I just want to say that this is mind-blowing and I, I hope that there's Cliff Notes or a cheat sheet out there on VMT because it's quite a lot. But I did want to ask about, um, when you mentioned about going with the governor's recommended thresholds, um, are the thresholds according to, um, populations, urban, you know, um, cities, um, are they according to population or how, how does it determine and how do we know that their recommendation, recommended thresholds hit Cattati, our population, you know, our, our transit mechanism, um, circuit and everything?
Right, yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question. Yeah, so there, the, OPR's recommendations are statewide recommendations and, um, whether or not they work for Cattati is something we're still wrestling with. Um, we are not as urban as some of our other urban neighbors are and so addressing some of this is going to be a challenge. At the same time, we're not as rural as some of our rural neighbors are, uh, which are going to have a lot more difficulty in addressing the VMT. But the thresholds that are proposed are, are, are a reduction standard that's related to the region or the city itself. So, and, so in a way, the answer is yes, because they're not asking us to address, you know, statewide problems, they're asking us to address the problem, uh, specific to our region or city. So, you know, reduce it 15% from where you're at today. Uh, and if we can achieve that, then we would be in alignment with their recommendations. Does, does that help the answer? And by the way, this, this teleplate will be made available and, um, it will be coming back to you again. Uh, so there'll be another, a little time to digest it and another chance to look at it. And, um, I also want to say that, don't be embarrassed if you find it complicated or confusing because it is very confusing. I'm utterly confused by a lot of it and, um, so, um, you know, just don't be shy about asking questions. If I can't give you the answers, I will do everything I can to do that, so, anyway.
Thank you. And I do, uh, want to say that in the long run, and I think it, it sounds like it's a better system than LOS because it really takes the than LOS, because it really takes into consideration other factors like teleworking and affordable housing, which it seems LOS did not allow for. So I do appreciate that there's a lot of other factors taken into consideration.
Great. Thank you, Sylvia. I'm going to go with Neil.
Yes, hello. Wow, yes, amazing. Back there, is that good? So how, in the Katati context, in this area, we're going to see a lot of on-ramp access from Roanoke Park? How does that fit into the sort of the regional analysis?
Well, so, let me see how I had to answer that. So Roanoke Park, when it's considering approval of projects within its jurisdiction, will need to develop their own mitigation strategies for reducing VMP. So what that will mean is they'll be required to put in bike, transit, you know, the things that would discourage the use of VMP. What's happening today with Roanoke Park is a lot of their impacts are being missed. A lot of their impacts on Katati are being missed. When they do a large project, like the university project or Sonoma Village, they are looking at a couple intersections within Katati, and they are identifying impacts, but they aren't really looking at the overall impact to Katati. So my hope is that approaching this in a regional way will help us with something like Roanoke Park growing on our borders. Unfortunately, going forward, because VMP will not, excuse me, because LOS will not be considered a significant impact under SEQA, kind of those intersection impacts that we are receiving from Roanoke Park, it's going to be more difficult to address those in the future. And I was going to hope that VMP mitigation strategies will take care of that. But there's little we can do, except for consulting with Roanoke Park over those of their approval of projects.
And this is Noah. I would just chime in and say, the goal is to get the modeling to be able to kind of carve out those pass-through trips and just account for trips that are originating from or ending in Katati. And the modeling is actually getting fairly sophisticated, and we can bring back that question or that, how that concept is being addressed in the traffic model, which is created by SCTA, when we bring back the threshold, the recommendation.
Basically, it's likely to give more of a analysis capability than the LOS, because before, the LOS was on a very blinkered view of just a junction, whereas now it's more of a regional, it can be, I guess the question is, can it be made visible at a regional level?
Your description of LOS is absolutely accurate, and the goal is to get the model robust enough to be able to capture and kind of get the nuance of where those trips are starting from and ending from, and not get bogged down by the pass-through.
Right, okay, good. So the other question on that also is, do we still have LOS embedded in the general plan? Are there still other areas that require an LOS analysis?
Yes. So the answer to that is yes. LOS is part of our general plan, excuse me. It is within our general plan, and we do have LOS. LOS is very useful, you know? It may not be the best traffic metric, but it's still important for us in terms of planning our roadways and intersections. We use it for nexus relationships with our Impact E programs, and also we may look to developers to install projects, like roadway enhancement projects, where we feel like it's necessary. The big difference is, is now it will be taken out of the SEQA realm. So it won't be a part of SEQA, but when we're reviewing projects and we're making consistency findings for our general plan, naturally, we'll be looking at LOS. And the advantage is, is it gives us, the city, a little more flexibility in determining where we think it's okay to have LOS impacts, and where we think we want some LOS, you know, we want the impacts to be addressed in a greater respect. So yes, it will still always be, well, I shouldn't say always, but generally going forward, it's going to be part of our planning, and it's still an important part of our traffic analysis. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks. So the other one, VMP in the sense of getting people to travel less and maybe be more healthy, walking and cycling, of which I'm a big fan of, would, how do we deal with people's perceptions of safety? And is there, is there a way, let me rephrase that, is there a way of getting feedback on what are the safety issues that, you know, will make people, will help people feel more comfortable out there? Is there a way of inviting community groups from SSU, maybe, or from the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, to actually talk about where are the safety issues? I don't know, something like that. Is there a way of improving the perception of safety?
There are. And actually, you know, thank you for bringing that up. You know, the intent is by looking at VMP, you will start to begin to address that. There's a whole other effort going on now, just really kicking off in Sonoma County, of which we're a part of, which is called Vision Zero. And you're going to start hearing a lot more about it. And I will bring a presentation to the Planning Commission, especially since you are also our Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, on Vision Zero. But essentially, Vision Zero is just that, which is to really wrestle with the nut of traffic injuries and deaths resulting from vehicles' travel, and especially with pedestrians and bikers that are being impacted as a result of this. So there are other efforts going on, and these all tend to complement one another. And I would just say, stay tuned, because that is, that's an effort is just kicking off right now, and it's really looking like it's going to be a really interesting program, this Vision Zero program. Other communities like Oakland and San Francisco have adopted Vision Zero policies, but this will be, I think, in the country, the first time a whole county kind of takes on the whole Vision Zero challenge as a whole region together, and I think that's the best way to approach it, frankly. But stay tuned on some of that.
Well, great to hear. You may want to also look at AB 1824, 1-8-2-4, and just perceptions of safety. Right.
Okay, yeah, I will look at that, thank you. I don't know it off the top of my head. I may have, but not now.
Hey Neil, this is Noah. As JP talked about in the early part of his presentation, one of the goals of looking at VMP is to improve roadway safety and kind of minimize some of those vehicular cyclist interactions by reducing the overall number of vehicles driving on the roadways.
Thank you, that's all I've got.
All right, Steve.
Nothing.
All right, Brittany.
Thank you, my question was answered, but thank you for a great presentation that was really educational.
So I'm going to speak now. So I'm so used to level of service, this is going to be a real change. With this SEQA involved in this, is this going to, and you were talking about regional, kind of like looking at the whole region and putting in maybe Petaluma, Pangrove, Roanoke Park, and how their, all their traffic impacts on us. We've never really done that. A small amount with projects, but not to the greater region. So my question is, is this eventually going to be like all of Sonoma County, where you really look at it as a whole?
Yes, that's exactly what the goal is with the VMP. And that is that regional approach to looking at transportation impacts. That's right.
And Lisa, as an example, you know, if a project came before the commission that was kind of creating a new destination that was in Katati, that would be a regional draw. While, you know, it may not have intersection impacts specifically, but it would bump up the number of folks driving into the community, and therefore, the VMP would go up. The city would then look to that developer to do some things to offset the increased, essentially, environmental impacts associated with all those additional miles being driven.
Okay, great. So someplace like if we put in a LOS or something like that, that would be, that would really increase people driving to our community, so.
Exactly. And the goal is to really capture that much more specifically than just, you know, what's the intersection impacts at Redwood Drive, you know?
Great. Wonderful. I'm looking forward to it. If there's no more questions, we're going to go to reports by staff.
Okay, well, just thank you so much. I'll be brief, but I did want to highlight that, you know, obviously, you know, community development staff and staffs throughout the city continue to work to support community. You know, as essential workers, we're all, you know, still working, whether remotely or in City Hall, or kind of a combination. And CD, you know, we, throughout this whole process, we've tried to really do what we could to maintain the services that we provide, while of course, respecting the health order and making sure we can minimize the transmission of the virus and trying to be safe. But we continue to process permits, we're working on entitlements, code enforcement, and with our efforts like this evening, you know, which we're responding to state mandates, you know, and it's really important, and we want to be thankful to you all for your dedication to keep working with us, and also for all the other departments that support us. You know, being able to pivot so quickly to holding these virtual meetings and really still trying to get community input has really been a real group effort, and, you know, it's exhibited by Lauren, you know, the city clerk, now participating in all meetings, you know, whereas before, she just did city council, or primarily was focused on the council, but Public Works, the city manager's office, you know, everybody, it's kind of been a real team effort to be able to keep going with some of these things. And it's important because, you know, as the council's talking about the budget impacts of this ongoing pandemic, you know, we're looking to try to respond to maintain our levels of services best we can. But also, with issues like this VMP thresholds of significance, and also some of the housing mandates coming from the state, they are not, the state is not providing relief in how cities respond to these, or what the deadlines that they've set forth, in this case, years ago, for us to be able to implement this direction. And so it's very critical that you all continue to participate, and we're just really thankful as decision-makers that you guys are able to do that, and you're working with us to step up and kind of navigate some of these challenges. And just know that, you know, we're trying to do our best, and obviously, there will still be some challenges and maybe hiccups along the way, but we're really committed to continuing to provide the services that the community needs. And if you, as individual commissioners, need any help with any of these things or have any suggestions, we really are happy to chat and would love the input, because we just want to make this a better process for everyone. And I would say, specifically for public engagement, you know, we're looking for ways to make folks as comfortable as possible plugging in with us and participating kind of in this new format that we're all having to utilize. But with that, I just want to say thank you again, and that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you, Noah. Any reports by commission?
Not me.
I think we're all kind of sheltering in place, too many places to go.
Yeah, this is Sylvia. Sylvia, and I just want to report that I attended Generation Housing presentation last week. It's a new nonprofit, and they are a community-based housing nonprofit that's really supporting affordable housing for the suburbs of Sonoma County. So I don't know how the city of Katati partners with other organizations, but that might be one we might want to look into. It's called Generation Housing.
Yeah, thank you, Sylvia. I'm not aware of them.
Yeah, so the director, executive director is Jen Close, is executive director, and I think they have webinars or Zooms every once in a while to talk about affordable housing. And they're working on policy and initiatives, and they're looking for people to become members of the organization. But you might want to look and see how the city can partner with them as well.
Definitely, thank you.
Great. Any other commissioners, anything? All right, I'm going to do the items received after the agenda was posted. There's a VMP presentation, Jamie Lane PBT, HLL presentation, parking rights PDF. I think that's it. If there's anything else, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for participating.
Thank you, everybody, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for a good presentation.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, have a good night.
Okay, bye.
You too, thank you.
Bye.